All right, I will call the Monday, January 4th, 2021 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. This is a remote meeting via go-to meeting. If you could please stand with me and join me in the pledge allegiance which Mr. Noble has shared on his screen. The pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. All right. Again, we don't have open forum, but I did have a conversation with Brian Noble, our town administrator, about getting that set up so that people can either, they can email, they could email Brian, they could email member of the Board of Selectmen if they have questions or something that they want discussed. And I think, Brian, also, we could then give them an invite to the meeting so that they could appear and do that.
Yeah, we're gonna have to be a little more flexible about opening that door so that we can get citizens to be heard. And I want to thank Peter Spigot who pointed that out to me as a limitation to online meetings. And so we're gonna have, we will create ways to be invited.
But, good. You know, if people don't want to do it, then that's one thing, but we need to give them, you know, the mechanism to do that. So since there isn't any open forum, we don't have appointments listed, but we do have an item that I want to take from right away. That is, um, you know, ask Sue and Tim if they could give us an update on COVID testing that they have scheduled in the town. So, you guys are ready? Oh, it's gone.
We good?
Sue and Tim, if you guys could give us an update on that, I think that would be great for us to hear. Thank you.
Can I go first, Tim?
Yeah, that's fine, can hear. Okay, so Sue and I, for the past month or so, have been trying to get a COVID testing site in East Bridgewater. And we were finally able to secure Saturday, January 9th from 8:00 to 4:00, and Sunday, January 10th, from 8:00 to 2:00. It'll be at the East Bridgewater Junior/Senior High School. It'll be an outdoor event, people will just stay in their cars. There'll be a, you'll have to pre-register, there will be a link added to the town's website tomorrow. We don't have that yet, but we should be getting it tonight or early tomorrow. Once we get that, it'll be, it'll be added to the town's website, and they'll be able to go on that, click on that link, and pre-register for the COVID-19 testing. Pretty much the way it's gonna work is everyone will enter the high school parking lot from Plymouth Street, and they will just line up along that road that leads out to Bedford Street, Route 18. The tent itself, it's a drive-through tent, and it'll be located right outside the cafeterias. The, uh, the school's been generous enough to allow us to use the cafeterias for the restrooms or whatever, and provide, you know, coffee machines, a couple of things we need to, we need to have on hand for this company. This company's Accu-Reference Medical Lab out of New Jersey. It's the same company that's done testing in both Hanson and Halifax, and I believe they do the entire state of Rhode Island. It's open to everyone, there is no out-of-pocket expense. If you have insurance, it's billed to your insurance, and if you don't have insurance, it's billed to the car out of Massachusetts. You know, both Sue and I encourage anybody to attend for testing, but more importantly, if you were at a, you know, a gathering over the holidays, and, you know, you really should go and get tested just in case you're asymptomatic and you don't even know you have it, and you pass on to everybody else. At least now you would know that you have it, you can, you know, self-quarantine for the 10 days. I don't think there's much more to add other than, you know, hopefully the weather cooperates, but if it doesn't, it shouldn't be a problem for those who attend to be tested because you're never gonna leave your vehicle. And, uh, we'll hope for success.
Jimmy, what if they don't sign up?
I, I don't have that information, I don't know if we're able to, yes.
So you don't have to pre-register, the form is actually, so that you're not filling out a form when you get there. So the form on the website is a registration form that you print out, fill in, and bring with you, but you don't have to pre-register to come.
Thank you, Sue.
I imagine it's like the one at Massa Soyet, that if you pre-register and you have that paper all set to go, it's a quicker process.
Yes.
So we could encourage people to do that, but it's good that it's not required.
Yes.
Sue, did you want to add anything to what Tim said? Anything else?
Um, just that it is a PCR test, so the results aren't instant, the results have been going about 48 hours. If people are tested because they are exposed or because they're not feeling well, they need to quarantine at home until they get those results, because the last thing I want to do is be quarantining a workplace or a family because somebody got tested, then went off and did their usual things, and then they find out two days later they're positive. So if you're gonna get tested, you really need to quarantine until you get your results.
And just to make it clear, this is for anyone to be tested, whether they have symptoms or not, and it's open to anyone, not just East Bridgewater residents, correct?
Correct.
Terrific. I can't thank you both enough for setting this up. I know it's something that people have been asking for, and I think it's great that, you know, we'll have this opportunity here in town for people to get the testing that they might need. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you again for doing that. Okay, moving on, Mr. Clerk, we have action items and agenda items, you want to take us through that?
Yeah, the agenda is pretty clear other than the action items, there's no appointments, as you said earlier, and we have roughly 17 action items to this evening.
All right, let's get to it, thank you.
So approve but not release minutes of the November 16th, 2020, 6:40 p.m., Executive Session Board of Selectmen meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Approve the minutes of the November 23rd to 2020, 6:00 p.m., Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approve the minutes of December 2nd, 2020, 11:00 a.m., Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Approve the minutes of the December 7th, 2020, 4:30 p.m., Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Approve the minutes of the December 14th, 2020, 6:30 p.m., Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Very none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Approve the minutes of the December 18th, 2020, 2:00 p.m., Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Very none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Approve the non-union COLA.
Second.
Any discussion?
Did we set a number?
Mr. Noble?
I, I need you to actually set a number on that, I had given you a recommendation, but...
There's nothing in the, um...
I'm gonna, yours, on... I think it says between 1.3 to 1.5.
That was my recommendation.
You had discussed 1.5, is that...
That, that's where I would be going, is the 1.5, a little more than Social Security, a little less than the, um, active military.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with that as well.
All right, Peter, do you want to amend the motion to put that specific amount in? Thank you.
Yeah, I'll approve the non-union COLA 1.5%.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Very none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Approve the emergency sick leave policy.
Second.
Any discussion? Brian, do you want to explain just why we, why we're having to adopt this now?
Certainly, the FF-CRA, which was enacted as emergency legislation to accommodate emergency leave under the COVID emergency, expired on December 31st. So we needed to come up with a COVID response policy to fill that void. And before you is the modified sick leave policy. And since the, the draft in your package was written, I've had some corrections that have come in from selectmen and legal counsel, so I just want to bring to your attention those changes. On the first paragraph on page 2, where it said, "Sick leave accruals should notify their supervisor or Melissa Morrissey, treasure collector," it will be "and Melissa Morrissey, treasure collector." So including, so the supervisor and the treasure collector needs to be notified. And further down, um, one of the unions wanted to be a little more clear, and they added the last sentence, including, so that would be right under absences due to closure of school or childcare facilities, in the last sentence of that paragraph, "including but not limited to voluntarily choosing remote learning, will no longer be able to use sick leave or EFMLE leave to cover those absences." So that sentence has been added, and everything else remains the same. I had a conversation with Rich Messina at Clifford and Kenny this afternoon, and he has reviewed the policy, and it's, it's set to go forward to you for approval with those changes.
So that, that addition that the union wanted, you're saying if they choose to do full remote with their child, but it's a choice, not forced, then does that...
They cannot use sick time.
Okay. All right, any other discussion on this policy?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, all in favor then, please say aye.
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 Approve the cost allocation agreement between the town of East Bridgewater and the East Bridgewater School District.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Mr. Noble, Mr. Shade?
Certainly.
Way in?
Uh, yeah, this is an agreement that's a long time coming. When I file the end-of-year report for DESI, I file what is budgeted to the schools, but I also need to include costs that are incurred on the town side, like health insurance, pension, waste, and things like that. We have been reporting all that information and all the, all those numbers in the past. It's just we have not had a formal agreement between the town and the school committee, and what we are asking you to do is approve this agreement.
And just to reiterate, this has been approved by the Department of Elementary, Educ, Elementary and Secondary Education. It's been approved by school council, it's been approved by town council. And I want to thank John and Superintendent Liz Lugo for working with me so assiduously to get this, this before you. It does take one of the action items off our audit letter for the future that's been there for quite some time, so I'm pleased to finally knock that off.
I think that's great, and it's nice to see it finally all spelled out and clear, and, and it's like the Board of Selectmen is the last piece of the puzzle on this one. Any, any questions, David or Peter?
No, I'm all set.
Peter, you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, if there's no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, everybody, that's a good thing to have done.
Moving on, do you adopt the energy reduction plan prepared by the Old Colony Planning Council?
Second.
Any discussion on this? Brian, back to you.
Happy to introduce two people who have worked very hard on this, of course, our own Brian Kylie and Joanne Zigmert from Old Colony Planning Council, who's been the driving force getting our Green Communities application in order and ready to move forward. So this is part of the energy reduction plan, and as you had approved previously, the energy policy on vehicles, which you adopted long ago. These are all part of it, and of course, as you know, we have an article on town meeting for Monday night, next Monday night, that will finish the town's requirements. We are waiting for one lawyer's letter to come in to confirm our zoning. Joanne, have I forgotten anything else while I have you there?
No, those are the main elements, Brian.
Thank you, and I'll, and I want to take this opportunity in front of the board to thank Joanne and Old Colony Planning for really helping us stay on point on this one, especially during all the challenges that we've had to deal with, and...
Very welcome, it's been a pleasure.
Thank you, and also, of course, our own Brian Kylie, who's muted, and we don't get to see his image right at the moment, because he'll probably blush when I say nice things about him.
Who could tell?
So of course, I'm recommending that the board approve this.
Great. Any, any questions, David and Peter, for Joanne or Brian?
Now, we sat in on, I think David was there as well, said on this, it's been a while in the taking, so I think we missed it in the last town meeting that was canceled, so it'd be nice to, to see it go this next Monday for sure.
Absolutely. All right, if there's no further discussion, thank you all for your work on this, and all in favor, please say aye.
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 Accept the recommendation to award the general contract to Titan Roofing as the low responsible bidder for the Central School ARP roof project.
Second.
Any discussion on this?
Yes, unfortunately, I haven't heard back from town council on this, but in all fairness...
Brian?
David, yes, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, we're not ready to move forward on this, I have not received back the recommendation from town council on the contract, but in fairness, I only gave them the package last Thursday, and I think there was a holiday, so we'll give them a little more, and if they've got us back and opinion, we'll be able to do this, we'll post a meeting for, for next Monday, just before town meeting, and ask you to approve it. But the package did come in, the lowest bidder is Titan Roofing, and I just want town council to review the package before we make a recommendation to the board to sign it.
I'll make a motion that we move the article into our next, next meeting next Monday, if we have heard back from town council.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So I imagine then we're also skipping 12.
Correct.
Okay.
Do we need to move...
Make the motion that we move action item 12 to our next scheduled meeting next Monday, if we have heard back from town council.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. Approve town planner job description, attached, I guess.
Second.
Any discussion? Brian?
This is a culmination of drafts that have been circulated with the town officials, both on the planning board and with Roy Gardner's help in particular, and, and the brainchild, really, of Patrick, for getting this moving forward. And I want to thank all of you for putting some time into that job description. We're gonna circulate it again in town hall, just to make sure we picked up all the loose ends, but I would like then to approve the job description, and the next item, of course, is I'm gonna ask you to approve filling the position.
It's a very thorough job description, I will say. You left anything out.
Three doctorates. That's just to get an interview.
I was pretty sure I wasn't qualified after the first sentence, I don't know.
Well, we're not gonna have any problem with, you didn't tell me that was my job.
You don't have to put his other duties as assigned, because all the duties are listed. All right, any, any other discussion on this?
I'd like to thank Roy as well as David, sitting in with that, as well as Patrick. I think this is way overdue, along with the engineering company that we're, we're gonna be looking for in the near future. This, you know, kind of cleans up, starts to clean up some of the things I think we've been missing in the planning, zoning, and building, and I know Conservation, Board of Health as well are very excited about seeing this process come down the road.
Yeah, absolutely, excellent point, Peter, and, uh, long overdue, and really makes for some, some good, good things to go forward with this one, for sure. All right, if there's no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Approve to post the town planner job position.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? What's that?
The sooner the better.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Awesome.
Review proposed changes to S-2290 and Act providing to recall elections in the town of East Bridgewater.
Second.
All right, discussion on this?
This was a, a citizen's petition that was put together probably five years ago, and it sat in the legislature for three or four years, and we had to redo it last year at town meeting to have the petition brought in front of the legislature again. And basically, the crux of it is, is we don't currently have, in one of the few towns, it does not have a recall provision. So this allows citizens to set up a recall petition. There are a lot of different aspects to it, a lot of different procedures to it, but it is something that town council and our state legislature, both senators and representatives agree should be enforced.
Yeah, I, I read through the, the, you know, the suggested changes that they have, and it seemed like it was mostly either procedural or just typos. I have no problem with, with the changes they want to make to get it, to, excuse me, to get it through.
One of the concerns that I've had, and I've had it since the first petition was put there, is you don't have to have any reason for doing this, you just have to state a reason. I thought the state had more provisions, and it had to fall within a certain category, but I was informed by town council that there wouldn't be enough room to put every possible category in there that you'd be limited to.
Then we get those people that wrote the town planner description to work on this. It all.
That's a good, that's, that's a good suggestion, we wouldn't see it during our terms for the next five years. I don't think there's a way we can put down specifics. I just think the board as a whole has to look at, if we get a recall, we have to look at, but why is this being done? Not just because you didn't like my white hair or what I was wearing tonight, that's not a reason to do a recall, it should be something that is affecting the, the way the town is being processed and, and being, you know, run by the Board of Selectmen and all the other departments and people in the town.
Is that it?
I think he's frozen.
No, I, I agree.
All right, people are freezing.
I think Carol agreed.
Agreed, I agree she agreed.
Carol, could you get back to us?
When was this originally brought to the State House? Does anyone know the actual...
It was five years ago, Peter.
2015.
So hopefully that's happened. If that's happened, if a recall position gets in front of the Board of Selectmen and gets approved to continue, there has to be a special election, which is a cost to the town. I did try to say, couldn't we put the cost of the reelection on the people that signed the petition? But that didn't go anywhere. But I believe the final was on that, that you have to get, to get the recall vote actually set up, you have to have 15% of registered voters in each precinct individually, and based on our numbers, that's somewhere around 1,500 to 2,000 signatures needed, so...
Wow.
Carol, are you with us?
Let's see if I can...
I think the Madam Chair has been kidnapped.
She's re-arrived, so let's see if she...
There she is, now she's on twice.
So, you know, the first recall petition is gonna be against me.
Do you have the paperwork already done?
Yes, I'm gonna do it for myself. Anyway, I'm sorry about that, and I missed anything anybody might have said. I, I feel like, you know, it's a recall thing, hopefully it serves more as a deterrent than something that anybody ever actually uses, you know, like it's a, you know, it's a threat to make sure you do a good job as an elected official, because you know that you could face recall. I don't know, but town meeting voted it, and it's our responsibility to see that it gets taken care of at the state level.
Correct.
So if there's no further discussion, did I miss anything vital? No, all right. And we're good with the language, the way they want to change it?
It's been approved by town council, yes.
Okay, then all in favor, please say aye.
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 Approve to renew the following Class II license for the period ending January 1, 2022, License 23, John Savino DBA Root 106 Motors.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 And finally, approve the 2021 Board of Selectmen meeting schedule as follows. Subject to change, should I read all these dates or as printed, or how am I doing this?
As printed, that's good.
Okay, as printed.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 That's it, slow down.
Thank you, Peter. Brian, any town administrator report?
Thank you, in the interest of time and brevity, I will just remind people the town meeting is next Monday evening at the, the high school, junior high school, and it starts at 7:00. And we will be using social distancing, and we will be being cautious, and wiping microphones, et cetera, and masks will be required.
And hopefully we'll get the business that needs to be done, we'll get it done.
Need to get a few things done.
I think we thought when we postponed it, that maybe things would be better, and here we are, and they're actually probably worse, but we'll get through it. All right, any announcements or staff reports? I don't know, Rebecca was gonna call in, but I don't know if she's here.
Rebecca is not able to be with us, but there are no announcements at this time.
I am here, but I don't have any announcements.
Rebecca is there.
There you are, thank you, Rebecca.
Excuse me.
Did Leah get her license?
We're sitting in the car waiting, she hasn't had her turn yet.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we have town meeting next week, and then our next meeting is on Monday, January 25th. Are there any board discussions before we adjourn for executive? Yeah, go ahead.
Just one, one thing, Madam Chair, I just want to announce that through Senator Timmelti's office, last year's budget, he had put an amendment to all his cities and towns for a $25,000 COVID amendment, which had been passed by legislature, and then it was being held up for whatever reason. But Mr. Timmelti did inform us that that money now has been included back in the Plymouth COVID money, CARES Act, so that will become available to us over the next, however long we're allowed to keep it. So, thanks a lot for Senator Timmelti, he's followed this all the way through, as he does every year.
Good. That is good. We'll reach out, I will reach out and thank him as well. Thank you for that. Anything, um, Peter, any discussions?
Uh, all I've got is um, on Thursday, uh, this Thursday, this Thursday, the 7th, myself, Brian Noble and John Haynes will be meeting with town council and Western Sampson on their feasibility study for the Route 18 project that we've been working on for what seems to be a lifetime. Uh, so we should have uh, we should have some, some idea um, of where we could hook up through uh, Broadton at, uh, as well as uh, some preliminary numbers and costs, which will kind of start the ball. From there, obviously, we would have to start the process and get to the uh, board of selectmen about um, how we would go about introducing this to the uh, people that are in that corridor. But uh, finally, we are going to actually see uh, see what this project uh, what the cost will be and, and where the layout will be. So all this work it's been doing on will somewhat uh, be put together here on, on Thursday and we'll let you know exactly how that goes.
That's great. Thank you. Thanks for your work on that and we look forward to your update. All right. Well, without any other uh, discussions or, or um, meeting topics, I will take a motion to adjourn and, and enter into executive session, not to return to open session. Can you just do the roll?
Carol, can I just talk about the election?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to say that the, for annual town election for April 10th of 2021, um, nomination papers will be available starting this Wednesday. Where we are close to the public, we just ask that you call the town clerk's office, 508-378-1606 to set up an appointment to pick up papers. Um, if you look at our page on the website, we have all the openings for um, any positions. And if you have any questions at all, just call the office and we'd be more than happy to help you out. And just the last day to pick up papers is Wednesday, February 17.
Thank you, Sue. I made my appointment today to take my papers out Wednesday morning. So there we go. Let the campaign season begin, right? All right. If we have nothing else, I will take that motion to um, adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session.
We just made a roll call on that.
Just made a roll call, yep.
Motion to um, move into executive session.
Under Chapter 38, Section 21, A3, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an opening media, open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation assistance of the public body, and the chair so declares.
And the chair so declares. Julius, yes?
David, yes.
Pierce Begone, yes.
Great. Thanks, everybody else. Have a good night.